Good evening, everybody. And welcome, both in the audience and also on TV Hamilton, to the March 24th, 2021 regular meeting of Hamilton City Council. We do have one public hearing this evening, as well as a first reading tonight, and they involve a change of zoning regarding the former Adams School in Beeler Park area of our city. There will be no vote tonight. Second reading of vote will be at a later meeting. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Present. Start off with a prayer. Please rise if you are able, and if you are able. Almighty God, guide our citizens tonight, tomorrow, and down the road, all for the benefit of our citizens. Lead the victims and families of shootings in Atlanta and Colorado to peace, including the family of a law enforcement officer killed, protecting others in Colorado, and protect our first responders and utility workers. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have no special presentations this evening, but I kind of created something that I want to mention that I didn't mention last week. The last meeting night was two weeks ago. I forgot to mention that March 18th was Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day, and with the help of Jim Williams, I did some research on that. The March 18th date is used because in 1937, on March the 18th, a natural gas leak caused an explosion, killing more than 295 students and teachers in a town called New London, Texas. I knew nothing about that, and that's a tragedy to find. The tragedy did lead to widespread odorization of natural gas and increased emphasis on safety. So I just want to say thank you, Hamilton's Natural Gas Team. They've helped us out in so many situations, and we're very proud of them. So it's a belated Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day. Okay. We now go to the audience of citizens, and for social distancing reasons, we ask that you email your questions, your comments to the cityclerk@city.clerk@hamilton-ohio.gov. The city clerk will read your comments into the record during the appropriate council meeting. We will, at the appropriate time, have an official city response. You must still provide your name and address for the record. Please be concise with your comments. We have no comments for audience of citizens, because I believe the one that we have in front of us is public hearing. Well, you do have the one, I guess. Do you want to read that tonight, or read it at a later date when we can do a response?
Mayor, I'd like to transcribe this first, and then at least have a response from the city, probably at the next meeting.
Good. Okay. Great. The Adams Elementary rezoning City Council meeting letter from Linda Cheek should probably go in the public hearing. So we have none tonight, then, for the record. Is that correct?
I believe so, sir.
Okay. All right. That takes care of audience of citizens, and no one signed the public speaking book that we have already taken care of. The consent agenda is next. Includes all staff reports, caucus reports, the even file, council information, and information to report for February 2021 monthly financial report, and information to report February 2021 monthly investment report. We had the committee hold this evening. We look forward to when that can be opened up, as we proceed down the road to safer times in this COVID environment. We have, how many? Six caucus agenda items, including evolving Assistant Law Director temporary annexing from St. Clair Township, request for a conditional use certificate to allow retail use, preliminary plat and final plat for the enclave at Twin Run, Health Code Chapter foreclosed property registration and notification program. It's a new chapter of the Health Code. And also, there's a caucus agenda item related to a Bane and Gas Station cleanup grant. There are motion involving those items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move that with the exception of the items so notable, council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur in the recommendations.
Second.
Motion to be made, Councilmember Nab. I think I heard Councilmember Brown second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. We now go to the public hearing. Now, I'll set the motion at the regular meeting and be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. We go into the public hearing at 6:09. Please read it into the record.
A public hearing regarding a request to change the zoning of the former Adams Elementary School in Beeler Park from R2 Single Family Residence to TN1 Traditional Neighborhood 1 Zoning District, City of Hamilton applicant.
Before we read the message that was sent to the city council through the clerk, anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing? Anyone in our audience here, council chambers, anyone who would be heard at this public hearing? Let's go ahead and have that email read at this time. If you would, please.
Sure. This is from Linda Cheek, W-E-E-Z-E-E-S-N-C at AOL.com, and it reads, "City Council Members, my name is Linda Cheek, and I am the owner of 517 Ridgewood Avenue, and my brother and I own the property at 426 G Street. I am writing in regard to the proposed rezoning of the Adams Elementary and Beeler Park area. According to the map sent with the letter about the meeting, there are 57 lots marked. I was told there are also looking at, quote, 'better use,' unquote, of the park area, which I am concerned could be an additional 20 to 30 lots. It is my understanding that Beeler Park was donated to the city to be used as a park. A portion of the park has already been removed for additional parking for Adams Elementary many years ago. I don't think the park should be reduced in size or rezoned at all. If it is to remain a park, why does it need to be rezoned? It is the only walkable park in our area, and has only recently been improved. The lot sizes appear to be very small lots. The lots surrounding the area, on both Ridgewood Avenue, Bab Lane, and D Street, are mostly larger than the lots that are proposed. The proposed change would also allow for duplex homes to be built. My big concern is the amount of traffic that it would cause. Figuring out the usual two cars per home, there would also be issues with parking with the lots being that small. Look at any of the historical streets in the area, and there are no driveways and not nearly enough street parking available. The situation causes difficulties for deliveries, snow removal, and trash collection. This would be potentially an extra 114 to 154 cars a day in the neighborhood, and that's if 20 lots are made from the park, as well as lawn care, deliveries, et cetera. There will also be construction noise, traffic, and utility service disruptions as they build. My thought at the moment is that you at least hold off on any change until you show the neighborhood impacted exactly what the plan is for the area, or no zone change at all. We still have no idea exactly how many homes or types of homes, or how the area will be accessed off Milliken or off F Street. Personally, I would like to see it remain green space, or very few homes on larger lots. I do not think this zoning should be changed without more information being given to the neighbors. The impact of this will concern more than the people that live within 500 feet. I'm aware that the developer who does not yet own the property has already met with the Architectural Design Review Board about whatever the proposed development will be. We were sent a map, but no actual plans of what is being proposed was sent to any of my neighbors. Since the developer does not yet own the property, there is no assurance that what is being discussed is guaranteed. Should someone else get the property, we could end up with 57 duplexes, and I apologize, that part of that was cut off.
Here you go, Daniel.
Doubling the traffic. We have a quiet, peaceful neighborhood, and we would like to keep it that way. Sincerely, Linda Cheek.
Thank you. All right. Thank Linda for her comments. I'm sure council will review those comments again. The second reading won't be until a later meeting. Hope everybody understands that. Okay. And that's the only comment that we have that's public hearing that she received by means of email or letter. Okay. All right. With that being said, anyone on council wish to speak at this public hearing, or wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I do have a question on this. When she's talking about the duplexes on this, I thought the original plans were showing for single-family homes only. If that's something that, I don't know if she did see that, but I was pretty sure that was single-family. And I kind of agree with Linda on taking away the Beeler Park land over there. We've talked about that, but I think, you know, they may have to downsize that, but I would like to make sure that this would be single-family and not duplexes. And I'm pretty sure that's what we saw last time. It was supposed to be single-family. So I don't know if that's back up on the slides, but I just think that's part of a discussion we should have with that.
You heard my comments last time about the donated intent of the Beeler family city, and I stand by that. Now, what is on our agenda as Agenda Item 15 is a first reading, and it's a change of zoning. There are other steps that developer would have to take in order to start doing things in our city. I'm not saying I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I think you've kind of made your opinion and statement pretty loud and clear, and I think I did that last time myself. But for purposes of this public hearing, and the purposes of what this first reading and what this particular agenda item is about, the ordinance, I'm not sure if you want to dive into that at this point in time. If anybody wants to make a comment, they can. Administration.
I'm happy to answer questions if you want.
Sure. If you would, and if you can at this time. If it's early to comment, that's okay, too, but if you can answer the question or any of the issues that's been drawn up during this discussion, we would appreciate it.
That's what I was looking for, and I didn't see her back there. Steve was hiding her.
Sorry.
Hi, Liz.
Hi. Liz Hayden, Planning Department. So the zoning is single-family zoning. The zoning, we created traditional neighborhood zoning for our urban and traditional neighborhoods like Prospect Hill, Rossville, Dayton Lane, Lindenwald, and they have a mixture of uses. So there is a clause in the zoning that does allow somebody to apply to create a duplex. The way it's written is the intent would be for an existing structure already in the zoning district to be able to apply for a conditional use to be considered to become a duplex, and it has 20 criteria of when that would be appropriate. So for new development, it's single-family, especially if everything around it is single-family. So that would, since everything around that area right there adjacent to it is a single-family development, that would be what would be appropriate there.
So you're basically saying that there's no way it's going to be duplexes are going to be allowed there?
Yeah. Based on the conditional use criteria for duplexes in that zoning district, it would not meet the threshold for when that would be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. Liz, is there any way that you could do a report to council through the general manager, through the city manager?
Absolutely.
Some of the things she's addressed in here?
Sure. Absolutely.
Great.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please.
Would that, in essence, answer her question? Is that how we would send the information?
Basically, what I would do is I'd look at this as a template, answer her questions, and then it'd be emailed back to her, as well as distributed amongst council.
Sure. Absolutely.
You would do that? I think Linda Cheek would be appreciative, and I know we would be appreciative.
We're not voting on anything on that tonight.
No voting tonight. Period on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Liz?
Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, please, this time, I'd like to concur with your thoughts on the park in the way the park was intended, to remain a park and not to become part of any kind of a residential development. I know we talked about that at our last meeting, as you said, Mayor, and I agree wholly. When I drove up and walked through that area to see the green space that was there, and to see the way it was cordoned off from what was former Adams side, I'd like to see, if you will, that west side of that park remain solid as a park and green space.
Okay. Well, thank all of council for, we all learned together, and Linda Cheek is going to learn as well, and that's what public hearings are all about. All right. Anyone on council wish to make a comment at this time, or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. Public hearing is closed at 6:20. I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
The regular meeting is reconvened at 6:20. We now go to council actions pertaining to legislative items. Can I accept a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at the meeting.
Second.
At this meeting. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation. Second reading of emergency ordinance related to the Main Street Hamilton Apartments LLC.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an amendment to the development agreement, property conveyances, and related actions with Main Street Hamilton Apartments LLC regarding parcel numbers P6411003000040 and P641100300041 located at 320 Main Street. Second reading.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion about this emergency ordinance? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Oras adopted. Seven zero.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number 10. Second reading of emergency ordinance involving some real property.
An emergency ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton's urban renewal area to the Consistorium for Ongoing Reinvestment Efforts CORE Fund, 412 Main Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45013. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion about this emergency ordinance? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Oras adopted. Seven zero.
We now go to Agenda Item Number 11, which is a second reading of emergency ordinance involving the Hamilton Community Authority.
An emergency ordinance pledging certain non-tax revenues to the Hamilton Community Authority to create and retain jobs and employment opportunities, and approve the economic welfare of the city in accordance with the Tax Increment Financing and Cooperative Agreement, authorizing amendments to that cooperative agreement, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
Move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion on this emergency ordinance? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Oras adopted. Seven zero.
We go to Agenda Item Number 12. Second reading of an ordinance involving a sale and development agreement and related actions with Wildfire Creative LLC.
An ordinance authorizing and declaring the city manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyances, and related actions with Wildfire Creative LLC regarding parcel number P64121002000032 located in the city's urban renewal area, 127 North Second Street. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Questions or comments about this one? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Oras adopted. Seven zero.
Agenda Item Number 13. It is a second reading of an ordinance involving the reformatting of our city zoning ordinance.
An ordinance amending certain sections of the zoning ordinance, number 7503, related to the reformatting of the city zoning ordinance, including the addition of a permitted zoning use chart and other revisions pertaining to a new digital format, City of Hamilton applicant. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Questions or comments? Amazing, amazing job that was done by the Plan Department. I mean, I'm just saying, it's incredible. About 1,000 pages or something like that, and the use chart is actually really user-friendly. So thank you, Plan Department. I'm sure our citizens will, when they start comparing the old to the new, they're going to be very impressed. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Brown.
Mohler.
Yes.
Oras adopted. Seven zero.
Now go to new legislation. Agenda Item Number 14. Two readings of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021. First reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Now, second reading of the ordinance after that motion.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021. Second reading.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussions about this ordinance? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mohler.
Yes.
Oras adopted. Seven zero.
We now go to Agenda Item Number 15, which is a first reading of an ordinance involving changing the zoning of the former Adams Elementary School and Beeler Park.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance, number 7503, by changing the zoning of the former Adams Elementary School in Beeler Park from R2 Single Family Residence to TN1 Traditional Neighborhood 1 Zoning District. First reading.
Okay. Go vote tonight. We go to Agenda Item Number 16, which is first reading of an ordinance involving Hamilton's Annual Action Plan, involving the use of the Community Development Block Grant monies and Home Investment Partnership monies.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton's Annual Action Plan Updates for Fiscal Year 2021 through 2022, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Homes Investments Partnership Program Funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. First reading.
Okay. Excuse me. Go to Agenda Item Number 17, which is a first reading of an ordinance involving registration of vacant and industrial buildings.
An ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Chapter 1507, registration of vacant and industrial buildings to include vacant residential properties. First reading.
And Item Number 18, first reading of a resolution in support of funding for North Hamilton Cross.
A resolution declaring the support for the Butler County Transportation Improvement District, BCTID, to apply for Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, Transportation Review Advisory Council, TRAC, funding for the North Hamilton Crossing Project. First reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. I just hope that when we submit what we're submitting, that they realize how well we did with the South Hamilton Crossing as a steward of the funds that we got for South Hamilton Crossing.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Congressman Davidson's office actually sent a letter of intent last week regarding these funds, so I was able to talk with one of their staff members two weeks ago about this. So they understand the importance, and then how significant this project is to the city. And I think it's noteworthy to state that Congressman Davidson understands what's going on down here, and very appreciative of him doing this for us. So fingers crossed.
Yes. Thank you for that report. Any other comments? Okay. Voting on this, correct? Right. So for the roll call vote?
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0. Audience, city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Hello, Hamilton. I wasn't going to make any comments, but I was sitting in the back and it just occurred to me that we have three employees that had either hit their 10-year anniversary or will be doing so in the next week. And those three employees are Stacy Dietrich in Economic Developments, Adam Helms of the Department of Resident Services, and Brandon Sarber in the Department of Neighborhoods. All three were hired in a very different organization 10 years ago when they started. All of them were not department directors. All three now are either an assistant director, which is Stacy's of Economic Development, and Brandon and Adam both are department directors also. And you go back and you think about the different jobs that they did over the 10 years that they've been here. And it's the unfortunate thing when you are an excellent employee that a lot of times excellent employees get to tasks that aren't always the best because you have so much faith and trust in their abilities to execute. And I thought it was just important to call out all three tonight, either have hit their 10-year anniversary or coming up, I think, in the next week or so. But all three have done a tremendous job. And the Hamilton that we see today, a ton of credit goes to those three individuals. So I just wanted to make sure that we were able to mark that occasion tonight.
You know, they'd be all-stars in any city. And they're self-motivated. You watch those folks work, and it's an incredible work ethic. Those three others, but those three have just done a great job. I've been blessed to have them for 10 years each. That's great. Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
You know, Joshua, when those candidates came to us in their work capacities, and since then, they pivoted three or four times in what they've been asked to do, what they have done with notoriety and brought value to things that they touched. It's incredible to think back when those people started and said, yes, we can do this. And then they moved here, and they moved here, and they moved here, and have been successful in their accomplishments. And so many times, we've complimented the team of people that work with you because what everyone has been able to do under extraordinary circumstances. And given the budget that we have to work with in the City of Hamilton and still have the development that I'll talk about here in the mint and audience of citizens, is just amazing. And again, the accolades that you shared from your perspective, I believe everybody in city council feels the same way, that thank you for bringing them to us as candidates and hiring them and asking them to come to work with us. And here they are, as you said, in their roads to success. And I think, as Pat said, any city would be proud to have them work with them.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Going along those lines also, when you look at the people that we have, that you've brought in, who have gone elsewhere to be a success, I think I saw on Facebook that Mercy Montgomery just became an assistant city manager.
Assistant city manager, yes.
And with Nick moving on, I think that that says a lot about the stability that is offered here in a training ground. So thank you for that.
Great. Thanks for bringing that to our attention because those 10 years flew because of great successes. Wow. Thank you. All right. Audience, city council.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a comment.
Please.
This past couple of weeks, we've learned of extraordinary, I've mentioned that word before, but developments that are going to take place here in Hamilton, up on Main Street, the announcement of Gavi and Rye. This past weekend, the announcement of the new complex that'll be going in at the former Knights of Columbus. And again, things that are just happening is people take note of what we're accomplishing here in Hamilton, and it's a good place. I spoke to a woman tonight who is a property owner and trying to rehab homes for historic value and things like that coming in. They've lived here a short while, and she talked about owning six properties that they're rehabbing that are historic value in nature to the city. So those things are exciting. We all know that properties go up for sale and they're sold fairly much the next day. We have neighbors that are talking about relocating, and their homes are already sold and things about what they would like to do and their intent. So they're hardly even mentioned, and they're sold before they're listed. So it's fun to see the development in the city. It's fun to see the activities that are taking place and fostering not only for today but for the future. Thank you.
Anyone else on council? Okay. Just want to read a letter, an email that I received. Someone named Bob Brainerd. Did you serve with Bob Brainerd on city civil service?
Civil service.
Volunteer, great guy. Writing to share with you how pleased my wife and I were with the vaccination program. Process was so simple and well organized, from signing up online to receiving the shots. This opinion has been echoed by many friends. Please share with members of council and city administration. Signed, Bob Brainerd. So compliments just keep rolling in because it was such a well-run template for really other cities, other counties. Thank them. Any other council say anything other than that at this point in time? We get to the next question. Is there an executive session, city manager?
There is, Mayor, for a couple different topics.
All right.
business strategy, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance. Second one is to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. The third one is to confer with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. And then finally, to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Regarding the reason given, is there a motion that the executive session has found to be necessary to protect the interest of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project?
So moved.
Second. Motion by councilmember Fear, seconded by councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please. Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0. Okay. Is there also a motion that we go into executive session for those four stated purposes by the city manager?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Knab, seconded by councilmember Brown. Roll call vote, please, on that motion. Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Brown.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0. Okay. It is 6:38. We go into executive session for those stated purposes. We'll come out of executive session to reopen the public meeting, only to close the public meeting. Okay. Thank you, TV, Hamilton, and thanks all for watching and any other comments.